The time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Brockton School Committee to order and ask you to please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we usually open each meeting with hearing of visitors. That's an opportunity for people to come before the school committee. And we did not have anyone sign in for hearing of visitors this evening. So we'll go directly on to tonight's consent agenda. The consent agenda is a block of routine school committee business that will be considered as a block in order to keep the meeting moving along. However, if there's any individual item here in the consent agenda that any member of the school committee would like to pull out for separate discussion and deliberation, now is the time for you to advise me as to that you'd like to do that and which item you'd like to take out. So anyone on the school committee that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Ms. Asak?
I would like to remove Letter C.
Just getting my pen out so I don't forget in a minute. Item C. Okay. Anyone else? All right, so then I'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda minus item C.
Motion to accept the consent agenda minus item C.
Okay. Motion is made properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. Joyce, item C.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank an organization called Cradles to Crayons. They were very generous. I had approached Mike Scottberg. He was my contact. And I had heard about a backpack-a-thon that they were working on. And they've been doing this, I think this was their 10th anniversary. And so Mike and I had been going back and forth, and he had indicated that they were going to be donating 1,000 backpacks. And there's two different age groups. We had the ages where, we had the five to eight, and then the nine to 12 age groups. And each backpack had different types of supplies. We actually have a couple of them here, and we'll show you some of the supplies that are in there. So, you know, surprised, Thursday night, right before they had delivered the backpacks, they added another thousand. So we had 2,000 backpacks delivered, which was very, very generous. So I would definitely like to thank Mike Scottberg. We would be, we'll probably be sending them a nice thank you and maybe having them here for a presentation at some point as a thank you.
I think that would be important to have them come forward if you're willing to recognize publicly a photo opportunity and a chance to thank them.
Definitely. It's a wonderful relationship. I had never heard of the, I had never heard of Cradles to Crayons, and I just stumbled upon it accidentally, just chatting with my sister-in-law. And they, they're so involved, and I'm sure this is going to be the beginning of a wonderful relationship with them. So I was really excited, and I'd love to, did you want to show them now?
I would, sure. And I think when everybody thinks about, you know, that opening of school, you know, one of the most important things for, I think, kids is to have those shiny new sneakers or that outfit for the first day, and to make sure you have a backpack, certainly for the younger kids. You know, the quality of the backpacks are wonderful. The thing that we were most impressed with, you know, again, as Ms. Asak said, it's filled with, you know, notebooks, folders, rulers, pencils, sharpeners, glue sticks. I mean, it is a full backpack, and I think when our folks in teaching and learning took a look, every child also received a book. So these are for the older kids, the center of everything, Linda Urban, and we have a book for the, for the younger students. So we're pleased, again, as Joyce mentioned, the backpacks will be given to our schools, to our adjustment counselors, for those students that truly, you know, need a new backpack to start school. And as you mentioned, they've got a nice little note, I believe, in every one of them?
Yeah, this is really touching. Each backpack has a little note in here, and this one just happens to be, "Have a great school year. You'll be amazing." So it really doesn't matter what's in the backpack, sorry, this little note right here just, I thought was just wonderful, a little extra touch. I mean, I thought it was nice. So it's very exciting, and like I said, hopefully it's a wonderful relationship, and it won't be the last event that we're going to be involved in. You know, we're working with a couple of June and Michelle and a few others, so hopefully we'll find other.
We heard it was quite a delivery.
[laughing].
Mr. Thomas is excited, Deputy Superintendent Thomas is excited to get them out of the warehouse and into the schools and off to the children. So again, thank you. This is an organization, having been an adjustment counselor, that I have been familiar with for a number of years. They assist us many times with supports for, for children, for families, could be clothings, could be games, could be holiday support. So I'm thrilled to have that connection and to continue to, to work with them to support our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need a motion on this item, then, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation from Cradles to Crayons.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. Thank you very much, Joyce. Should we do, are we going to bring them in? Can I say good to a letter of thanks or something for the school committee?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So with the, with the school committee's authorization, how about if we send a letter on behalf of the school committee expressing our appreciation for the donation? And we'll still follow through and invite them to a future meeting, but I think it's a really significant donation that we should take a moment to recognize. Everyone's in agreement on that? Okay, great. Just before we get to the superintendent's report, I meant to mention this at the top. If you notice on tonight's agenda, the next to last item is executive session. At the end of all the regular business before the school committee tonight, the school committee will go into executive session. Under the Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, outlines the reasons or the exemptions from the open meeting law that allows a public body to meet in executive session. And item number three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares. So having had a chance to speak to the superintendent this morning on the intended topic, it's very clear to me that the topic of discussion falls well within this exemption to the public meeting law. So at the end of the public portion of the meeting tonight, we will go into executive session, and we do not expect to return to public meeting at any point further tonight. So it's incumbent upon me to let everyone know whether we intend to return or not. So I'm letting everyone know, we do not intend to return after executive session. Okay? All right. Report of the superintendent of schools, teaching and learning.
I'd like to actually take this out of order. I want to start with really good news. I'm very pleased, and it's been certainly processed this summer, but I want to announce some administrative appointments. And I did speak about this at our finance subcommittee meeting, but publicly at the school committee meeting. I'd like to introduce you to our new principals that are going to be taking over the reins. And some of them are names you'll be familiar with, actually all the names I think you'll be familiar with, but a couple of new faces. So I'd like to invite down here Mary Beth O'Brien, who will become the principal of the Huntington School, starting on the 18th of August. She'll take on her role. Mary Beth has been in the district since she began teaching. I'm not going to remember exactly the year, but 2004?
Yes.
Oh, good.
It's 2004.
And has actually been a member of the Huntington School staff for quite a while. She's supported us as assistant principal of both the Huntington and the Raymond, and is very well positioned to take on that role. We're excited to have her. A name you're familiar with is Val Brower, principal formerly of the Brookfield School. Will now move on to a little bit larger school, to the Baker School. We're very pleased that she willingly has taken over the reins that was vacated by Ryan Powers, who left to become the assistant superintendent in Bridgewater. Val has had, again, a long history in Brockton, a number of schools, an excellent instructional leader, and we're very pleased to have her. Now, a new name to us, as we just, just announced this, you'll actually see it when we have our presentation soon from final site, but our new principal of the Brookfield School is Margery Masson, Margo as we affectionately call her. Margo has been in the district, again, many years, a number of positions. I'm very pleased. Margo and I worked together when she was exceptional as an extended day coordinator back when this was very new in the district, certainly set the tone, worked with parents, made sure children got their services. She's been a math coach, she's been a coach, an instructional resource specialist at the Brookfield, and is well positioned to continue that educational excellence at the Brookfield. Not here this evening, I just met with Cindy Burns. You're familiar, and you had Cindy actually come present before you, but Cindy will be the principal, of course, of the Keith Center. So I'd like you to congratulate our principals. We have a full slate. [applause] Would anybody like to say anything?
I'll just say that while I'm extremely sad to be leaving the families and the kids and the teachers at the Brookfield, I have thoroughly enjoyed my time there. If I had to hand my baby to anyone, it would be Margo. So that school is in wonderful hands to continue. She'll continue all of the initiatives that we have in place.
And I'm very excited, enthusiastic about taking on the reins.
And I'm looking forward to the Baker. I've been, you know, it's my 28th year, starting my 28th year, and looking forward to, I've heard nothing but wonderful things about the staff, the students and the kids and the initiatives, so I'm actually really looking forward to the year starting.
I'm sure many of you know I've been at the Huntington for 12 years. A great deal of that time was working very closely with June and her leadership team to develop a lot of the expanded learning time initiatives at the Huntington, and then to continue them or start them at the Raymond under Carol's leadership. So I'm very excited for this wonderful opportunity to continue the great work of the teachers, the students and the families at the Huntington, and I hope for continued success there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much, ladies.
Congratulations.
Yeah. I believe we have some other members in the audience, and these are our administrative appointments. I thought I saw Rachel Umbriana, who is going to be our new coordinator of foreign language department, seven to 12. Rachel is one of our former administrative interns. You might have been familiar with her work very recently. Congratulations, Rachel. Emily Flores is going to be the department head of social studies. She was in interim role last year. Laurie Silva, who I worked very closely with, is taking over the reins of director of community schools, coming from our grants department and had worked in community schools as the 21st century coordinator for many years. Laurie, again, is a longtime member of the district. Patty Dupuis is taking over as the interim coordinator of extended day, a position that we held open last year, and we're very pleased to be able to fill that this year. Elaine Alves is your new housemaster at Brockton High School in the Azure Building. Carrie, Carolyn Kopp, is the new housemaster at Brockton High in the Red Building. And Andrew Donovan, Andy, is the new housemaster in the Green Building at Brockton High. So we are still filling in some of the assistant housemasters, and I know we're going to actually be talking a little bit about those titles this evening. But again, we're very pleased that people have worked very hard. I want to thank Human Resources Office, who is doing yeoman's work to try to get people in place so that we can start the school year. So congratulations to all of you, and I wish you a very successful school year. I'd also like to bring up, while we're having the conversation, is the title change. So I did have the opportunity to speak to President of the BEA, Kim Gibson, at a meeting we were at this past Friday. The Brockton Education Association has been alerted that we are looking to change the title of housemaster, which had been talked about for the past year and a half. I believe we've certainly listened to some of the, the concerns of the public. I will say, and I think I said it publicly before, when you look back at Brockton High School back in the 1970s coming on board, they were very excited at the time to have such a large building, well over 5,000, I think 6,000 students started back when this, these doors opened back in September 1970. And at the time, we had what we called a house system, actually exactly what we have now. And each child was assigned, or student was assigned to a house, and the titles that went along with that, and many of these were titles in education forums, sometimes in, in college, in university life, other times in private schools, but there was what they called either a headmaster or a housemaster. And that was the title that was given at the time. You had a principal, it really is the same structure you have now, and you had an assistant housemaster. So we are recommending that, looking at that title and the concern from the community and our students, we would like to propose that those titles change for housemaster to dean, and for assistant housemaster to assistant dean. Again, this is discussion that we have brought forward. It is not a change in anyone's hours, wages, or conditions of employment. It is a title change, and we would need to, I'd ask you to take action as a school committee on that change.
Okay. So do we want to have discussion first or motion discussion? We can just open up the floor for discussion if you'd like. Mr. Minichello?
Yeah, I think this is something the school committee has been talking about. We had a discussion at our prior retreat, actually, I think, two retreats. You know, obviously, the sensitivity of many of our students and many in our community has an impact on how we conduct ourselves as a committee and a community. And I think that, obviously, at the time that Brockton High School opened, you know, I was, I was probably, I think, in elementary school, and if there was, if there was an upheaval or people were upset, obviously, they wouldn't have termed those positions in, in the manner that they are, you know, now labeled. So I think that we, you know, we're listening to the community, and I think it's the right thing to do, where we can basically, through a simple change, adopt what I think is a very good alternative title to those positions. And if it's going to support and have a positive impact on our students and our community, I think we should all be for it. You know, it's something that is going to basically produce harmony rather than disharmony. So I think it's the right thing to do.
Anyone else? So I'll just follow up Tom's comments by saying that I think that it is true that this has been a topic of conversation over the last couple of years, but I think we should acknowledge the fact that recently Bishop Tony Branch highlighted this issue to us during a hearing of visitors. And I think that certainly reminded us that this was something that we needed to really take a look at and take action on. I think it's probably, I shouldn't say probably, it is long overdue. I like these titles a lot more, and I'm hoping that the committee will agree and adopt these changes in title. Any further discussion? Okay, so.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to adopt the recommended change of the term housemaster and assistant housemaster to dean and assistant dean.
Okay. Motion's been made, properly seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously? Why don't you make a note that I did cast a vote on that one? Okay. All right, very well. We appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to invite, I'm going to save my conversation on the budget update for last. I would like to invite Michelle Bolton up here, our communications director, to show you the new final site, which was launched, I want to say, August 1st. So again, we're going to just have a brief overview of what the new site has for functionality, and so we can take a look at, at the different options. So Michelle, you're going to be using the.
I'm very happy and excited to introduce you and give you a brief tour to this website, which has been a long time in coming with the redesign, and which I think is going to really serve our students and families. Just a little bit of history, it's been in progress for about four years, and is, is quite a difference from our former site. The contract was signed two years ago, and the redesign began. And then there were a series of reasons why it took a little bit of a backseat for a while, and then when I started the job last fall, we decided that this would be a priority because we really wanted to move this project forward. So I started working with our part-time webmaster, Kathy Ettinger, and then we hired a very wonderful young, talented lady, Jessica Silva, who put in about 10 hours a week at night after her regular job was finished. And what we did was, we had a wonderful, colorful, empty shell, and we had to move hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of pages of information from our former site to the new site. And in the process, we made a decision to leave behind hundreds and possibly thousands of pages of outdated information, which we decided we would leave behind and build a new site, and then start with what we, what was the bare necessity of what we needed to start a new Brockton Public School site, and then build from here. So I think the, one of the biggest priorities of this site, which was the biggest point of discussion at the time that the decision was made to do a redesign, was that it was not friendly to mobile phones. And so one of the things that's most dynamic about this, besides the fact that it's bright and it's family-friendly and interactive, is that you can view it beautifully on your mobile device, whether it's an iPhone, or an Android, or a tablet. And we found that research shows that between 50 and 75 percent of people who are on the site are using their phones. So I would encourage you to dial it up on your phone at your leisure and, and click through, and you'll see the ease with which you can look at our information. So I'm going to give you a short tour, and then just encourage you to click through to see the beautiful features that we've included. First, at the top of the site, I think one of the most important things, and this is a key feature of the strategic communication plan for the district, is translate. This is going to allow any family in virtually any language to read our site. You click on translate, and over to the right, you can select your language. And you virtually have any choice at your fingertips. Languages that span the globe, let's try Galician. You know, the page automatically is translated, and all sub-pages, you know, and this goes for any language that you want. We have made the decision, though, that anything which we feel is critical information will still be translated, and we'll have links, and that includes this feature, which is the message from the superintendent, which is on the homepage, which is going to change periodically, depending on what information the superintendent would like to get out to the district. And at the bottom, we'll have our major languages for families, translated by our advocates. Because the translation tool is great, but it isn't really, it's not really an intellectual translation, whereas this is done by our advocates, and it's just a little bit more of a thoughtful translation, and we want to be sure that, you know, in situations like this, that we have the exact translation. Up at the top, our quick links, translate, we have registration. So anyone who is looking to get information on how to register for school in the district is going to be brought to that page. Any kind of student assistance is going to bring you right down to the parent information center and, and student registration. This is a great tool that we've incorporated on most of the pages. It's called an accordion, and it's a way that we've found to be able to put large amounts of information on the page without overwhelming our reader. So you can click on online preregistration, which is a new tool that we've just provided to the parent information center. And then here is all the information that you need to be able to preregister online, which is going to save a lot of time for people at the parent information center. It saves at least 45 to 60 minutes per child, per family. So that's a really great innovation that we've been able to provide for them for this Anytime that you want to go back to the homepage on the site, you just click on the big B, and that brings you back to the homepage. So up at the top, the quick links, alumni, you have calendars. This is going to bring you to the page where you have information on pretty much everything that's going on in the district, in all languages. This is to come. Here's the, we're going to be populating this calendar now, so BPS 2016-17, month-to-month calendar will be here, English, Spanish, French. This is the calendar of events that runs on our homepage. It usually runs 10 items at a time. But also on this page, you're going to have all the Channel 98 information, monthly calendar of school events, and we'll be adding calendars as we find other interesting information that we want to provide for our families. Students, this is a page that we're going to be building. We realized that our former site had lots of information for adults, but we needed it to, we need this page to be more student-centered. So this page is going to not only have these bubbles, which we call it call-to-action links, but, but, you know, there, we call them bubbles, they can be changed at any time. So we're going to have bus routes, which are being developed right now, cafeteria menus, you know, library and media, BHS athletics, guidance, driver's ed, again, registration. It can be changed to anything we want at any time. We have flexibility for any kind of information here. Anything that, yep.
Now, if try is going to take place for certain sports.
Yep.
What under athletic, like, as, just an example, where would a student, how would a student go about finding out, oh, you know, football tryouts are, you know, on such and such a day, or what have you?
Right here in back-to-school info, which is on our homepage, we have populated this bubble with anything that anyone needs to know about back-to-school information. So right now, we have tryouts at Brockton High, we have all the grade six orientation dates. Well, for example, at Brockton High, we've got all the dates for tryouts, locations, and times, and we're adding to them. I think we're waiting for cheer information. So we're waiting for that info. We've got the middle, middle school grade six orientation, which is different than the open house info. This is for later in the month for kids to go and just have a tour around the school and get a little bit comfortable before school starts. So we have those dates. We have got the open houses for all schools, you know, pretty much anything that parents need to know, they can go to this bubble and find right now. And then we also have the title on breakfast, dates, and bingo for books for the little ones. And then we're adding bubbles every day as we find information that we think parents need to know right now. So also on the homepage, this is the calendar, pretty much changes every day. Oh, excuse me, this is our press room. So we've got the tryout schedule, any press releases that are important to know are going to be here. Three elementary schools, beginning with new leaders, Summer Fest, which is coming up this weekend. We've got the budget information, which we've kept updated, all of the minutes, the barometers, anything that's come from the finance subcommittee meetings is all here, everything that's been released so far for the public to stay up to date with. Anything that's been discussed at those meetings up to this date is there. Let's get back here. I think the homepage is really front-loaded with a lot of information, as you can see, and these bubbles also change. Brockton Kids Count has its own page here, and will be populated with information as we get ready to kick off the campaign this year. Here's our calendar, which contains 10 dates. Anything else in it will slow this module down, but then, as I showed you, there's the calendar page, and that will have the calendar for the entire year. Down at the bottom of the page, we have a little bit more information, you know, we've got quick links like bullying and. You know, we've got quick links like bullying information. The Parents Academy has a link here and at the top of the page. We don't have their schedule yet for workshops, but we will fill it in as soon as we do. And then we have some things that are more for staff, like Infinite Campus and the ESOP program, which is for staff who are calling in sick or for finding subs. So for schools, when you go to our schools, this link, this row of links, it's a little bit squeezed in on this screen, but we've got links for our schools, the learning and teaching department, parents and community. We've got our administration, district departments, teachers and staff. I can show you, you know, our schools. Let's go to Brockton High, for example. It's a little bit slow here. Again, we have the accordion, which is going to save us a lot of space. You know, clubs and activity. Everything will be filled in here as we, as we connect with the people at the high school who are going to be giving us information to fill in these pages. Athletics. You know, we just click on it and it will close again. Business services. Everything has its space. On the left side of the page, the school's administration, each department. We're working now to fill in the names of staff who might have left and then new staff. So we're getting that all up to date. In administration, let's, let's look at the school committee page. We have your minutes and agendas archived all the way back to 2006. So you can come over here, for example, and if you'd like to see what happened at any meeting at any time, you just need to come down here, look in the accordion, look for your year, and any of that information will be there. Oops, we came back here. Our social media links to the right, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And we'll instantly link to those pages. And you can see, you know, see what we're doing. One thing that we're working on is, we're working on something called a mashup page on our website, which is a place where all of these social media programs can land, so that you can click on the page and you'll see everything that we have tweeted, that we've posted on Facebook, or sent out on Instagram. I was lucky enough to be sent to a conference last Friday at Final Site, which is the host company for this website, and it was all on social media. And it was absolutely fantastic. There were 13 workshops. I learned so much. And a lot of the seminars were just amazing with things that really involve students, which was the one thing that I was hoping to learn about. And one of the initiatives that I'm hoping to do is to find some faculty members at the high school who will agree to help me, help me find students who will work with me, who will live tweet at games, who will start to really get some of the social media platforms working and get students involved to help us to build our following. You know, Mr. Gormly had a great idea, talking about a marketing club and a sports management club that somebody else had mentioned, you know, really find ways to get kids involved and get the word out about the schools in a different way. And this website has so many capabilities that I think that we're going to be able to use these modules in a way that's really going to showcase BPS. So, you know, it's a, it's a very exciting time to be able to launch this site. You know, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I really would urge you to, you know, to click around and let us know what you think. If you see something that, that you think is missing, let us know. Or if you like something, let us know, and we can enhance it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there's anything that you would like to know more about.
I have a suggestion. As a parent, I'm always looking for different things online for my kids to do. So it would be cool to have like a section, or a tab, or a button with educational websites that we use in the school. I know my daughter, and I'm sure Lisa, your daughter comes home with these little sites that they play games on, and they don't really know they're learning.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a cool thing to have up on the front page.
We do have a math website that the elementary math and science teachers have done that we'll be linking to.
Awesome.
And that has some really cool activities and stuff, too. You know, not only for vacations, but just things to do at home. So we'll be getting that up there as well.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Do you have a literacy link, too?
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, parents could look at to see which books would be great to pick up at the library during the school year for their students?
That's a great idea. Yeah, thank you.
I stole it from Brad, really.
Both ideas, very good. Anybody else?
Contracted with the company and we're hoping to launch a couple of years ago. It's been a long time coming. Again, I want to thank everybody that supported you, including all the district offices. I think it's a work in progress, but I think it's a site that we can be proud of and will continue to improve. I'm not sure how I'm going to do with tweeting, but I am going to give it a try.
We'll get you out there.
Looking forward to my first foray in social media. Mayor, you might have to teach me. You're good at social media. I think that's great. So again, thank you, and we'll keep you updated, and we'll ask for feedback from parents when we're out there, talking to parents, open houses. We're going to ask them to go on the site and to make some suggestions, and certainly to get them involved. The next part is the budget update. When we last left, and that was our finance subcommittee meeting on August 2nd, I think we were anticipating the state finally completing their budget process. I know it was long and arduous for them to complete a process in August, when we were expecting that process to be completed sometime in June. The mayor and I plan to invite our legislative group to sit down with myself, Aldo Petronio, Jay Condon, and to really have some discussion about how this unfolded in retrospect. One of the things that I do want to share with you is, we were hanging on tight for a long time for that $618,000. You know, that was our conversation. We watched it go through the House. We watched it go through the Senate. We watched what happened when all of a sudden the state budget, you know, hit a roadblock and they kind of went back to the table. And unfortunately, and I'll talk about some of those roadblocks today, but when we were told that they had completed the process, we were waiting for the $618,000, the mayor and I continue to be concerned, along with you, with the non-net school spending, looking to support our buses, looking to support some of the programs that we wanted to bring back. I think we did an excellent job allowing us to open up in September with your elementary, your middle, and your high school teachers back in place, a minimal amount to allow us to at least open those doors, since I cannot tell you that enrollment is dropping, is not dropping. We continue to watch that carefully. That being said, we're informed and had a meeting today that that $618,000, over 400,000 of it went to other, so it's not that the 618 didn't come in, but we get charged back because in the middle of that budget that we were so carefully watching, there were increases on charter reimbursement for kids, and I'm not talking about the charter coming in. I'm talking about kids that are already in charters in Foxborough, South Shore, a number of charter schools. And it was an additional $400,000 with charter and school choice, which left us, and the amount off the top of my head is about $186,000 to round that number off. In light of that, on a positive note, on the front page, you will note that as you brought teachers back, other teachers, unfortunately for us in some cases, took jobs in other districts. We knew that was going to happen when you talk about really the roller coaster that we have, you know, gone on certainly during this budget cycle. So with that happening, we presently, and we're being very conservative, and you'll see item number eight under additional funds, you'll see unemployment savings on eight full-time teachers, and that amounts to about $258,000. I'm going to recommend that you put that towards the programs that we so much have been waiting and holding out for to be able to make some of those decisions this evening. If you look at that first page, when you add together that new amount of money previously based on our additional expenses, it leaves us with $394,000. On the second page, we have the programmatic budget priorities that you had put in place, which is the intermural all grades, the hybrid middle school sports program. We already had money put aside from $30,000 savings with the pre-purchase of equipment. The empower yourself program is on there, and that comes up to $252,000. That being hopefully supported by the money that we saved on the unemployment costs of teachers coming back. We also, and I'll go back to certainly any questions, but we also had a discussion on the second. The mayor talked to us about the situation with our school resource officers. We talked at that time about looking at the importance of bringing them back, not only to support our middle schools, relationship building, support for security, and also support for our students. Many times, they're working in classes, you know, with our students and sharing certainly their, their knowledge. So we ended up having a discussion today, and I'm going to recommend, along with the mayor's support, that we bring back our three full-time Brockton School Resource Officers. And Mayor, that'll be a 40-60 split on that, I believe, for this year to the tune of $132,127. At the same time, we also took a look at some of our recommendations for school police. We will be, you know, announcing to you a process that took place a number of months ago, and we are going to be recommending to fill three positions. Two that are being vacated by our school police, who are actually going on to the Brockton Police Force, are actually already there as of, I believe, July 1st. Another one was vacated by an officer back a number of years ago that had been left vacant. We're concerned because we also have a police officer presently out right now on injured leave, and it really has put us in a situation where, knowing what we do with safety and security, the recommendation will be for very small money because we're past the July 1st date. We'll be bringing this person on in the next couple of months, so a lot of it becomes a cost savings. And I think it was to the tune of very short money, I believe it was another $11,000, $15,000.
If I could just clarify that just a little bit. Looking at being able to fill the remaining current vacancy on the school police, the two new school police officers that are in the process of being hired now will not be able to go to the police academy until the end of October, October 30th. Therefore, they won't go on the payroll till October 30th. In the meantime, on August 1st, two of our former school police officers transferred to the Brockton Police Department and assumed their duties on the Brockton PD. So there is a gap of three months between the departure of the two officers that left and the hiring of the, of the new officers. So that three-month savings on those two salaries almost covers the cost to fill that other third opening. And it boils down to about $15,000. And, you know, my recommendation is it would be foolish not to fill that other opening on the school police for the sake of $15,000. The reality is that the school police are going to be extremely shorthanded this year because as these individuals are hired to become school police officers, they have to wait to get into the academy on October 30th. It's a six-month academy, followed by two months of in-house training before they're ready to go out on their own. We won't see those new officers this school year. It'll be right around the end of the school year that those new officers will be coming on board. So really, this decision, particularly about the $15,000 for the final vacancy to fill, we're really looking at making a very small decision now to make sure we've got that manpower back on board with the school police force for next school year. It'll be next summer before those officers are actually on duty and able to go out independently. Lieutenant, does that sound about right? October? It'll be next summer or close to it by the time those officers are able to go out on independent patrols. October, November, December, January, February, March? And a month or two of in-house training? It'll be the end of June?
Yeah.
Yeah. It'll be around, somewhere around the end of June. So I do think it is critically important to fill that other vacancy at very minimal cost because of the savings on the two offices that we do already have built into the budget.
I'd like to look at the budget barometer, which we continue to update. And I particularly want you to look over to the side because I'm sure everybody shares my disappointment on the $618,000. And what we did was show what comes on the so-called cherry sheet. And you see the, again, exactly what it looks like and the amounts of money that came out from the charter and school choice, the cost to the school budget. It was a net loss of $431,606. And I also want to bring to your attention, right under that, is state grant funding that was also lost to us during this budget session. We had talked to you about the kindergarten expansion grant, which allowed us to bring paraprofessionals in to support our kindergarten classes of some very large numbers. When you talk about 24, 25, and 26 in those classes, we were also notified during this state budget session that we lost $72,500 in an academic support grant that supported Brockton High School for Credit Recovery, SAT prep. A lot of those small programs that truly make a difference in the lives of kids looking to graduate and move on. This obviously is a real concern to us. You know, we were very much focused on that 618 and trying to follow what was happening at the state budget. So this is, as I said, a concern. We are going to talk to our legislative group. My concern is, when you try to be fair to people across the state, and I keep using the examples of our neighbors, and it doesn't matter which neighbor I pick that surround us geographically. Many of them are suburbs. And I want to remind everybody, when we kept looking at that 618, everybody around the state received that type of funding. They received $55 per student. It started out as 20 from the governor. That netted us about $300,000. When they added that additional 35, bringing it to 55, that was our 618. So when you look at, if you look at surrounding towns, they're not losing kids to charters the way that we are. They're not losing to school choice. That happens in the urban centers. They're not benefiting by a kindergarten grant supporting our large numbers of kindergarten students coming to school for the first time, sometimes very young, sometimes speaking a different language. All of the stresses that we're dealing with are really not shared by the surrounding towns, nor do they need, again, when I look at that academic support grant. So to me, this ended up being very unfair, and it's something that should cause us concern. I don't think any one of us could see it. I think it's been more than an education and continues to be part of the dialogue going forward. As you look at, again, where we are, I mean, you'll see the update on the positions that you have brought back. You see the priorities, and this is all of the different rounds we've talked about. The last round that we've added today is your unemployment savings of $258,000. So that is the budget update, pretty much in a nutshell. I want to thank you again because I do feel we are at least poised to open school. When I last left you, I talked about waiting for those elementary numbers, being concerned about large numbers, and having monies to look at additional teachers. And we have very little money. We will continue to look at, as people are brought back, look at unemployment costs going away, and hopefully have a little bit of a cushion if, in fact, we have difficulty with, with large class sizes. Mayor, do you want to talk about the non-net school spending piece?
So just to add to the superintendent's comments, first of all, that I think that throughout the last few months, as we've been working together to try to restore as much of the budget as possible, I've consistently had a couple messages for the school committee. One was, don't make any plans to spend the $618,000 until we actually have it in our hand. And I recall a meeting not too long ago where I was trying to be extremely cautious to say we can't spend that money unless we actually, until we actually see it on a cherry sheet and we know we've got it, because I've had concerns all along as to how much of it would be real or not. In terms of what happened with the state budget changes from the governor's original budget, it was really a classic case of give it with one hand and take it back with the other. So, yeah, there is an additional $618,000 of Chapter 70 showing up on there. However, while that change was being made, there was also being a change made to the formula as to how they calculate the charter school reimbursement, which caused our number, our cost to go up over $400,000. So that 618, in effect, really turned out to be 186. So, that 618, in effect, really turned out to be 186. That's the only net gain there is from the additional funding that we were hoping for from the budget. And, you know, it's devastating news because I think everyone was cautiously optimistic that there was going to be another $600,000 of money available to allocate prior to the first day of school. I, I think we've got two critical needs right now that we've talked about. So, the other thing I've consistently reminded the school committee is while we're spending all the available funds, there was still a $333,000 deficit on transportation that we weren't forgetting about, but we were pushing it back to the end of the summer because we knew we had more time to deal with that. So, with the first day of school breathing down our neck, there's no more time that we can delay funding the balance of that school transportation. So, what I have suggested to the superintendent earlier today that I believe is the most prudent use of the remaining funds that I have available is to not send the 186 over in Chapter 70, but to send it over as part of covering the $333,000 deficit on, on transportation. I've spoken to Mr. Thomas, I've spoken to the superintendent. I'm ab, I, I, they have convinced me that we cannot get by with any less buses or vans than what's currently budgeted for that $333,000 deficit, not unless you're willing to push out the walk zones. And I don't think there's a big appetite to do that. So, we'd also had conversations on the city side that there was a small pocket of money also left in the city budget from cuts that the city council had made from the budget that I submitted to the council that had not been re-appropriated, and that number was about $200,000. And, you know, we've kind of had our eye on that all along as a place we could go to help find that transportation money. There was similar disappointing news with that. When we looked at the cherry sheets, not only did the number change on charter school reimbursement, but we also received $70,000 less on the city side. So, the, approximately $200,000 of what we believed would be unappropriated funds that I could still go back and ask the city council to appropriate to the school department. The real number is about $135,000 now with the, with the new cherry sheet. And these, so people know, we just got these numbers from the state late in the day yesterday. So, we were scrambling today to be able to have hard numbers for the school committee tonight. So, what I intend to do is to, we've fully funded the Chapter 70 Foundation Budget and local funding for this year. So, I do have the flexibility on the city side to ask the city council to appropriate that money, to allow me to appropriate that to non-net school spending rather than net school spending to help cover the travel, transportation deficit. And along with that, I'll also ask the city council to send over the 130-some-odd thousand that we have remaining unappropriated in this year's city budget. When you put those two numbers together, they just about cover the $330,000 deficit. Gets us within $10,000. And then I think that the, I believe that's the most prudent use of what I've got left for remaining funds coming in on the city side, because I don't know that we have an easy alternative to not providing transportation and telling parents that two weeks or three weeks before school opens. And in some of my informal conversations with members of the school committee, I don't get any sense that the school committee is looking to cut transportation below the level that it's at right now. So, that's what we intend to do on the city side, is to send about $330,000 total between two appropriations that I'll have to run through the city council. And that will give you the funds to cover the transportation deficit and allow us to have the vehicles on the road for the first day of school. I think in terms of restoring the student programs that the school committee's been committed to restoring, the projected savings on unemployment costs just about cover that. So, I think that the best we can do right now today is to reinstate those school programs with what's left in the Chapter 70 funds that you've got available on your side and fully fund the transportation that we've known for some time had a $333,000 deficit so that we have our buses on the road for the first day of school. And I'll entertain any questions that the committee may have in terms of the city side of the budget and what is available for funds. Mr. Manchello?
I concur with the mayor with respect to his, you know, breakdown and assessment and recommendations. The committee has been very cautious, and we've, you know, we've gradually, you know, gotten to this spot. I think we all know that there was going to be a, you know, a limited amount of money. We were hoping for a little bit more, but we were always cognizant of the fact that, you know, we need to hold off spending, gradually implement and vote in certain things. We've done a good job, I think, of bringing back the amount of teachers that we need. We'd like more. We definitely would like more, but, you know, we have basically covered what we can cover. And I think the next step we need to take tonight is to move forward with a vote to allocate some of the existing funds to those programs as well as the additional cost, which is de minimis in my mind to bring back an extra officer, because like the mayor said, we are already behind where we used to be. And it's going to take time for that person to actually be on the job in the Brockton Public Schools. So, if we don't act now, you're talking about an entirely, you know, another total year, you know, the following year. So, I don't like where we're at, but I think we prudently got to a point where we're in the black by the skin of our teeth. And we did that by fiscal restraint and holding off. And I think it was a good move at the last meeting, finance, to bring back those positions because, like the mayor said, and Mr. Petronio pointed out to us, we are able to bring back those programs because of the savings in unemployment by the teachers that were brought back. So, that basically, money, you know, was, came in, and now money's going out to cover those programs based on the actions of this committee at the last finance subcommittee. So, I mean, that being said, I don't know if you'd like a motion, Mr. Mayor, at this point, or if you'd like it under?
I'll go. The action you need from the school committee tonight would be to allocate the money for bringing back the student programs?
Yes.
In terms of the non-net money, it's not here yet. I'm just simply explained what we're going to do on the city side. Right. That has to go through the city council, and it doesn't cause any immediate problem with the first day of school because there's money in the budget for the first, most of the year.
So, with what we have control over, I would make them, what's that?
So, the number is 394,426. We recommended, if you'd like to look at those budget priorities you had for bringing programs back at 252, it would leave you with 142,426. When you talk about the three school resource officers, remember that's Schedule 19.
Right.
That's not presently in Chapter 70 funding. That's down the road for later this year.
So, you're talking about an allocation of $267,000, 252 for the three programs, the middle school, hybrid middle school sports, the intermurals at all levels, as well as the Empower Yourself for a total of 252. And then you're talking about an additional $15,000 allocation to bring back another school police officer.
Yes.
Right. So, so, I would make the motion.
Put that in the form of a motion.
Right. So, my, my motion is basically to allocate the total sum of $267,000, which would provide funding for the following. Intermurals at all levels to the tune of 137. Hybrid middle school sports for $70,000. Empower Yourself for $45,000. And then to bring on an extra, another school police officer, an additional $15,000 for a total of, like I mentioned, $267,000.
And it leaves you with a balance of $127,426, if my math is correct, on the net budget at this point in time.
Okay. Yep. Which is a very thin cushion in a $200 million budget. So, we've got a motion that has been made on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay.
I think it needs to be seconded, too.
I know it needs to be seconded. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Sullivan, seconds. All in favor?
Opposed.
Turn to Yanis.
Okay. That being said, I just want to say that when we start to look at the budget for this year, typically we're looking at the budget February, March, we're watching numbers. You know, I'm submitting to you, and we'll have conversation about this, but I would like to begin looking at the budget in October. We also need to look at, when you hear the conversation that just happened about non-net school spending, we need to, as a committee, bring, and when we talk about referral to subcommittee, we need to take a look at a facility subcommittee meeting for all of the reasons we talked about, for looking at programs, possibly placing some programs in elementary schools that are much farther away than where the children are coming from, decisions that were made a number of years, years ago that I am questioning. Also, if we're talking about extending that walkout, we need to be looking at the neighborhood school model. So, I'm suggesting that when we start the school year, we right away start with some of those subcommittees to start to have those conversations, not in February, not in March, knowing that many of these things we're going to continue to be discussing in the year to come. We're also, as we said, bringing to the table legislative delegation. That is worth a conversation as to what happened in this budget. The other thing, and we haven't had a chance to really discuss this fully, but when you talk about the budget, one of the positions we had talked about previously, not funded under local funds, we have some support from ChildWells, is that community data specialist, but it is looking at that direct certification, because that is coming very quickly. That's that October 1st number, and we're looking to have support with our parent information center to make sure that we're getting that number right and that our parents have opportunities to make sure that by October 1st, you know, we're able to, it used to be your free and reduced lunch forms, now it is a certification by the state with direct certification. So, these are things that we already have in place going towards the budget next year.
Just to quickly follow up on the superintendent's comments, I think that it would be prudent for the school committee to, right after we get this school year going, to begin at the subcommittee level, looking at the issues of transportation and school models and school alignments. Because I think if you can see from what occurred here tonight on a small scale, I don't think anything's going to drastically change in the way the state is underfunding gateway city urban school districts next year. And I don't think transportation's going to get any easier. So, I think that the decision that's looming on the horizon for the school committee is making a choice on dollars between transportation and classroom. And I think if you're going to be looking at those types of decisions in next year's budget, we need to be using the time in the meantime to really look at some of our facilities and see how we're using all of our buildings to the highest and best use, and to what extent could we realign some neighborhood schools to reduce the cost of transportation before having to extend out a walk zone. And, and the walk zone is going to have to be a subject for deliberation also, because I think it's clear that there's going to be a finite number of dollars that can come locally. And if the state continues to underfund us like this, the decisions are going to get tougher, not easier. So, I would encourage the school committee on the subcommittee level to begin right away looking at issues that will impact facilities and transportation for next year. Okay. Are we done with that stuff?
Is there a motion or?
Oh, did we? We already passed it, didn't we? Yeah, passed Yanis.
Okay. I just want to end quickly with my report. I want to remind everybody that the commissioner, and I'm talking about Commissioner Mitchell Chester, who oversees the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has chosen Brockton for a first-of-its-kind meeting on September 20th. It is a regular school committee night for us. I've had an opportunity to speak to Jay Stewart, our former city counselor, who now works for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The commissioner is very much looking forward to coming here at 6:00. We're going to be getting the location squared away. He truly wants to meet with our parents, similar to those of you that were present when we had the kickoff campaign for Brockton Kids Count. He wants to talk about some of the initiatives in the DESE. He wants to certainly have questions to him. So, we're coming up with invitations and certainly question, opportunities through open houses, certainly our social media, to get word out there and hopefully get a crowd there to welcome the commissioner, and also to really start to ask, I think this is really an important time to have some of these questions answered. He will also then come before the school committee during our regularly scheduled meeting to talk to us about a number of issues that are happening throughout the state. You know, the new accountability system coming in, looking at the so-called Next Generation Test, MCAS 2.0. I'm sure there's going to be conversation about budget. I'm sure we can bring up conversation about charter. So, we will have that opportunity as a body to invite the commissioner to come before our school committee. That date, again, is September 20th. More information will follow. And just to end on a high note, I want to say that I attended, summer is never a downtime in the Brockton Public Schools. I attended three graduation ceremonies. The first one was Edison Academy. Over 200 youngsters graduated, again, another one of our alternative programs, another feather in our cap, that these are kids that are receiving their high school diploma, going on to college, going on to career, going on to the military. The mayor joined me that night. I think you would join me in saying it was filled with parents, family members, and this is something that you created a number of years ago and have continued to support. We also had two graduations with collaborations with the Y. Our summer leaders' graduation ceremony was at East Middle School for a number of our middle school students going into high school. Very impressed with, they served as camp counselors, they were involved in a number of leadership positions. They are well poised to come up to Brockton High School and be successful. I want to thank the Y for a strong collaboration and our Power Scholars. And you had to see at the Baker School, the graduation there, filled with parents, you know, filled with over 100 youngsters, grades two, three, four, and I believe five. So, again, there is never a quiet moment in the Brockton Public Schools. And just to let you know, I also spent the day for a few minutes today coming up to the high school. Today was the last day of our special needs summer program. And to watch our special needs youngsters doing a talent show was fun. The one thing that I really take away is, no matter what, teenagers are teenagers, they're typical. I got to sing with Justin Bieber songs and, you know, dance, and it was just a wonderful occasion. So, I want to thank all of those educators that support these summer programs, all of our support staff that make this happen for so many youngsters in our district. Sometimes I'm not sure how we continue to do it, really. So, thank you.
Okay. That's it. All right. So, before we get on to the last couple items on the agenda, I wanted to recognize Mr. Sullivan for a moment.
Can I just get a little more time?
Huh? Yes.
Before this.
Okay, sure.
When we first come in, in January, we had a meeting with the Vice Chairman, Tom Manicello, and he advised us that this was going to be a real tough year. And I wasn't sure it was going to be. And all of a sudden, we were hit with a $10 million shortfall. And $10 million is a lot to make up. This committee did it, with meeting after meeting after meeting. I'm, I'm not even sure how many meetings we had on budgets, budget review, finance. There had to be about 20. And it's just happy to see that at the end, there's $127,000 left, overage instead of the underage of $10 million. I mean, it's a big plus for this committee. And Tom, you were right, you hit it right on the head. And you, Mr. Mayor, and Kathy. It was a job well done, and it wasn't an easy job at all. It was tough. I just wanted to thank everybody in your wisdom, Tom, because you hit it right on the head. Thank you.
Well, and I think we're not done yet either. We're going to be continuing to work and try to identify other sources of, of money that might be able to be expended, so. But at least we are ready to open the schools. Yeah?
We, this was a new committee that came in. We have a lot of new members. But I knew right away that the members of the committee, all of the new members, and obviously the veteran members, had their hearts in the right place. It's all about doing what's right for kids. And we
And we all have different opinions, and we don't agree on everything, and, you know, I told you guys, we wouldn't agree on everything. But the bottom line is that everyone on this committee cares about the right thing to do, cares about, you know, providing services for kids. And when you do that, you don't get in trouble. You've got to just put the kids first. And when you try to put the kids first, things fall into place. I know we're in the black, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, Timmy, but I'd rather be in the black, a couple of million dollars, for a nice buffer, because when you have, right, because when you have a budget of what we have, and if something, you know, we get a special ed student that comes in, or you have some expenses, unexpected expenses because weather is horrible, that's pretty tight. But I appreciate the kind words, and I appreciate this committee as a whole. You know, you and Judy certainly have some experience, but all of the new members have put, rolled up their sleeves, committed, learning, doing the right things, and have their hearts in the right place. So we're very grateful, and obviously, the administration has worked endless hours with recommendations for us. They've done, you know, hard work. The superintendent's done a great job. And we also have to give credit to the mayor, because he stepped up with the money right away, told us what he had to work with, instead of parsing out money over time so that we could make the best call that we could with the dollars we had. So, you know, everyone, I think, put their best foot forward in this budget, and it's, you know, it's still a tough situation. I'm not happy where we're at, because, yeah, I mean, none of us are happy where we're at, but, you know, we have to go forward for September, and under the circumstances, this is the best we can do with what we have to work with, you know? So.
After what Tom says, this is the best we can do with what we have to work with. So I want to express my appreciation to all the hard work by the school committee on the budget. I sat there and did four of them prior to becoming mayor. I know how much work it is. I don't think people realize the hours that you put in in subcommittee meetings and prepping for meetings and all of those things, and certainly, everybody's under a lot of pressure because we would all like to be adding positions, not trying to figure out how to get by with a little bit less. So I don't think anyone's satisfied. I think we ought to continue the conversation about an equity in education lawsuit, because I think the state's continuing to go the wrong direction now on properly funding urban school districts. I think we really have to get organized for another charter school fight. I think we should be proactive, encouraging people to vote no on question two. And I think that we should be getting ready to fight another proposed charter school to come into the city. So I mean, I think we've got a lot of work in front of us. But I do appreciate everyone's hard work, and thank you, Superintendent. Couple other pieces of business that we have to take care of. Under unfinished business, Tom, we've got an August second finance subcommittee meeting report.
Yes, we do. On August second, at six-thirty over at the Arnone School, the finance subcommittee met. As pointed out earlier by the superintendent, Cindy Burns spoke to the committee about her programs and what was happening at the Keith Center. It was a very informative presentation. We also spoke again about our finances. Mr. Petronio pointed out where we were at. We discussed the SRO positions, about bringing those positions back with a sixty-forty split for three positions, but those monies are not in our current year's budget. It will be an offset of Schedule nineteen based on next year's budget. So we had voted to approve three full-time resource officers at a sixty-forty split. That was one vote. Then we had a discussion, again, about the programs we talked about tonight, intermurals, middle school sports, empower yourself. It was basically decided at that point that we could wait a little more time with respect to those three items. However, Mr. Thomas explained that thirty thousand dollars was needed to fund certain coaching positions so that he could basically gear up for this year's activities with our students. So there was a motion to use twenty-four thousand of an available thirty thousand to restore recommended coaching positions, with also six thousand dollars allocated for winter sports. So the committee voted in favor of that item. We also importantly discussed, you know, where we were at with respect to teaching positions. And the committee voted at that time to recall eleven middle school positions and five high school positions, as recommended by the superintendent and her team. So that was done that evening. We also were informed that there was some grant money with respect to a sped department head position, and that it made sense to bring that position back due to the monies that would be outside of the scope of Chapter seventy. It would be grant funding monies. So basically, our local dollars would be unaffected, so the committee voted to restore that sped department head based on those representations. The superintendent, again, discussed then, as she did tonight, about Mitchell Chester and the Commissioner of Education coming. She also discussed some positions with respect to principals of schools, which, again, were discussed and celebrated this evening with respect to the new principal of the Brookfield, the Huntington, and the Baker School. Oh, and we also discussed, and it'll be an item coming up shortly, changing the name of the program from B.B. Russell to Frederick Douglass Academy. So those were basically the minutes of the finance subcommittee that took place on August second. So I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
This motion may be properly seconded to accept the report of the finance committee. All in favor? Opposed?
And then I think we need to just follow up and ratify the votes that took place that evening, one being a vote to approve.
If you want to roll it all up into one motion, Tom.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. Okay, so I make a motion then to ratify the following items that were voted on at that finance subcommittee meeting. To approve three full-time school resource officers for a six, with a sixty-forty split, the schools paying forty, the city paying sixty. To approve the use of thirty thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand dollars to restore recommended coaching positions, as well as six thousand dollars to apply towards winter sports. To approve the teaching positions, the recall of teaching positions, eleven middle school positions and five high school positions, as requested by the superintendent. And to approve the restoration of the sped department head based on the available grant funding that was presented that evening. I believe that's my motion.
Yep, so that's all in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor? Opposed? Approved unanimously. Thank you, Tom. So we'll go on to new business now, and another report of a subcommittee. We need the report of the policy subcommittee. Was that earlier tonight?
That was earlier tonight.
Okay. So the policy subcommittee met earlier this evening, so we need to receive a report and also take action based upon that meeting.
So the policy subcommittee meeting, the subcommittee met this evening at six-thirty, whereby Superintendent Smith and Dr. Terrasi presented updates to our substance abuse policy. They explained to us that these were updates from both MASC and MASSS, and highly recommended that we adopt the new language. A lot of the language in the, there were two policies, one regarding teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, and the other, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. Items identified as IHAMB and JICH. Dr. Terrasi pointed out that a lot of the language is very similar to what we previously had, and that the Brockton Public Schools is up to date with respect to having policies on these items, but it is always good to update to current time with the new recommended policies being put forth by the state. And both the superintendent's and Dr. Terrasi's recommendation was to adopt the new policies. That was basically, essentially, the contents of tonight's meeting.
So first, we need a motion on accepting the report of the subcommittee?
Motion to accept the report.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Approved unanimously, the adoption of the report. And then, do we need separate votes for each policy, or?
I think we'll do one.
All right, so let's do one motion to accept.
To accept the new policy.
The new policies as outlined in the report.
First identified as policy IHAMB, the second identified as JICH with respect to substance abuse.
Okay, so is that a motion? Properly seconded, all in favor? Approved unanimously. And we also, under new business, have a recommendation on a change of a title of a program. So Superintendent, I'll let you outline that.
Correct. I do want to mention that because of accountability, it is considered a school. Now, obviously, it's not a school building, but it has a designation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and has been called the B.B. Russell School. In our conversation with Principal Cindy Burns at our finance subcommittee meeting on August second, we talked about the students at the school taking a look at that program and recommending, they did a survey, they talked to students, so two recommendations. One is to change the name because of the confusion with our Barrett Russell Kindergarten Center, which actually is the name of a building and a school, to change it from the so-called B.B. Russell School at the Keith Center to the Frederick Douglass Academy at the Keith Center. And every one of those other programs, and we mentioned Champion High School at the Keith Center, Champion City Program, which goes on in the later afternoon to evening at the Keith Center, Pathways Program at the Keith Center. So all would be housed there. The kids were excited about their new mascot. I told you, it's a big bull, a charger. They're looking to have a logo, to pick colors, to do all those things that make kids feel part of the culture and climate of a school. So that is the recommendation for that change.
Yep, and I, in our subcommittee meeting, Ms. Burns did really outline in great detail her strong recommendation that we adopt this new name. So any further discussion? Take a motion?
Change of appropriate from the Keith Center to the Frederick Douglass Academy at the Keith Center.
Yep. Seconded. Motion's been made properly seconded, all in favor? Approved unanimously.
And I just want to remind people, we will now connect with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. There was a form that we fill out to make that change in the school.
While we're still on to new business, I do want to recognize Mr. Sullivan, who would like to make a presentation. Tim, come on up and take the floor.
Yes, right in front of the camera. Last Saturday, August thirteenth, I was approached to, I thought I was coming to watch a soccer game, but instead, I was there to hand out the awards. It was a championship game. I ended up with a free dinner, free water, a couple of T-shirts to take home, and an excellent night. They had music, excellent game. It was a Haitian team versus a Cape Verdean team. And they wanted to give this award, this was going to Mike Thomas. If you'd come on up, Mike. I had it hanging on my wall for a week. But it reads, "United Soccer Fest Presented to Mike Thomas, Brockton High School, for your generous donations, time, and continued support, 2016." Congratulations.
I think Mike's a little underdressed to accept an award himself. Just an observation.
Did you hear him? It's hot in here. As we sit here in Syracuse.
Yeah, the guy who's, we're apparently saving money on AC here. God, I'm sweating profusely. The guy who shut off the AC came in a polo shirt, yeah. All right. Anything else on the new business before we get ready to wrap up? Okay, so go ahead. Joyce?
I just wanted to refer the warehouse lease over to the facilities subcommittee.
Oh, yes. Glad you said that. Yes. So items to refer to, subcommittee, we had talked about policy in our previous meeting, facilities, and transportation when we talked about. We can wrap that right into the discussions as we go forward for the schools. So three subcommittee meetings. So policy, facilities, and is it transportation in, to look at the busing? Safety and transportation.
Okay, so duly noted, that'll be added to the agenda for those upcoming meetings. So, to make sure we do this properly, at this point, we've conducted all the, oh, Summerfest, yes, someone do a plug for Summerfest, sorry. No, go right ahead. Summerfest this Saturday.
Just a reminder, a very, a very nice program for students will take place this Saturday at Brockton High School, August twentieth, 2016. It's a great day, there's all sorts of activities for the kids. The organization that puts it on, headed by Bill McGauley, is always very diligent and very thoughtful in terms of the variety of activities, and it's always a good time. Hopefully, Mr. Thomas won't chintz on the air conditioning that day, and we'll have a nice, cool school to have the festivities in, but it's a great, it's a great day for a low-cost event, really virtually no-cost event, for kids and parents and bring their family members.
Lunch, goodies, ice cream.
Exactly, it's just a great time.
Yeah, it's a great take, great family event. I encourage everyone to come up with their family on Saturday.
It's what community's all about.
Jury dot show, and I want to remind everybody that back in 2011, Summerfest had been here for years. I enjoyed it with my children when they were little. You couldn't wait to come up here. It went away as things do, and back when we had the fortieth anniversary of Brockton High School opening and community schools, we brought Summerfest back. And when I say we, it was our community. So I love looking at this program even a number of years later with Bill McGauley, Gene Meck, and so many people that have come together to continue this going. I think we started out that first year with seven hundred. I know they've had well over, you know, thousands of kids and families that come, and I think the weather actually looks good on Saturday.
From ten to four.
Ten to four on Saturday, and I'll be joining you, I think, Superintendent, for the, to present the Art Awards, which is a great art exhibit of the work of the students here. So you definitely want to take that in if you come to Summerfest, which you hopefully will. Okay, are we good with new business now? Okay. So, at this point, it's the intention of the school committee to go into executive session for the reasons I outlined earlier in the meeting. So in order to do that, we need to take a roll call vote of the school committee to vote to go into executive session.
I would repeat the reasons, I would repeat the reason right now.
Okay. So for anyone who wasn't paying attention earlier this evening, under Mass General Law's Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, which relates to the state's open meeting law, under Section twenty-one, it says, "A public body may meet in executive session only for the following purposes, and purpose number three that is listed in the law is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares." So as the chair, and having reviewed this with the superintendent early today, I am declaring that this exemption does apply, and it's my suggestion that the school committee take a roll call vote to go into executive session. We'll just go right around and start with, Lisa, it's yes or no on going into executive session?
Yes.
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll also vote yes. So at this point, we'll take a brief recess so that we can clear the room, and I need to also make sure that I mention that we do not intend to go back into public session this evening, so that we know further public business conducted tonight.